Mr. Plaebel, can you take role?
Lori Gudinski.
Here.
Linda Gracy.
Here.
Scott Official.
Hi.
Tom Hamm.
Hi.
Motion carries. That brings us to special reports.
Yes, thank you. We have two special reports tonight, but it's our pleasure to have this special act. Wait them. Our principal of Melrose Elementary. Yeah. No. Presents the Board of Education tonight on the great things that are happening at Melrose Elementary.
Thank you.
I thought it was a doctor's.
So, at Melrose, we don't have the newest school. We don't have the newest facilities, but we have a great staff. We have great families and great kids that come to us. And so, we have some really awesome things that are going on at Melrose this year. So, I've invited quite a few of my staff members here and a couple students to share some of the great things that are going on at Melrose. So, if you guys want to come up. Maybe we can tell them. What we're talking about. So, we're doing some great things in math this year. So, we have Jessica Hayden in third grade math and Kim Walzak in fifth grade math that are going to share some of the things that they've been working on. We're doing some new flexible seating with personalized learning. We have some teachers that are going to personalized learning training this year, and they're getting some things started. And we're working hard over the summer to get some personalized learning things, flexible seating set up in the classrooms. That's Megan Kelhoffer in second grade and Allison Makinda in third grade. And we've also been working on our One School, One Book project. So, we selected a book that all third through fifth graders have been reading this fall. The PTO purchased the books for us. We've been reading the book. We had guest speakers from around the school district reading each chapter and video recording that so that the students could listen to that at home. And Mrs. Sternberg is here. She's kind of been heading up and organizing that project at Melrose. So, she's going to speak with you tonight about that. So, first up is math.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Hayden. I teach third grade math at Melrose.
And I'm Kim Walzak. I teach fifth grade math and science.
Kim and I are constantly looking for ways to improve teaching and learning in our classrooms. A couple years ago, we found this book called Building Thinking Classrooms by Peter Lilidoff.
So, and the basic premise of this book is to get our students thinking about math for longer periods of time without just mimicking how the teacher showed them how to do the problem. So, Jess and I were really intrigued with this. We went ahead over the summer, we read the book, and then we did some of the practices and put them in our classroom last year, and we're continuing to use them this year.
And we have some videos to share with you too in a minute here. So, a typical math block consists of the teacher giving a critical line to thinking task. Students are assigned to a random group of two or three students. They will discuss how to solve the problem and show their thinking on vertical whiteboards. The teacher walks around giving hints and extensions as needed. That encourages critical thinking and knowledge transfer, but not mimicking. At the end, we have a consolidation of learning where the teacher highlights necessary content and exemplary work.
So, we have a little video. Am I going to hit the little down arrow during the video? So, a little video showing you how the whiteboards or thinking boards work.
So, you're at $2.10, so now how many of these do you each need to get to 10 if you're at $2.10?
We're almost halfway there.
25 of them? What do you guys think in here, Hudson? What's your strategy?
So, we're adding 8 plus 5, 85 plus 75 equals $1.16, and then adding 16 more cents to $1. It would be $1.00 and $2.00, $2.00.
All right, what did you guys do here?
We were adding $2.00.
Oh, $2.00. Now buy two tacks. Go ahead. Okay, what are those things?
Everything.
Are those a certain amount of money?
We were using $2.00.
Okay.
And we were getting $2.00. And then we had to pull these $2.00.
Is that close to $10? So, if you know you need those to get to $10, how much more do you need to try to get close to $10?
So, the practices that we have put in place have worked out really well for our students. They have turned into mathematicians rather than just being people who study math. By working in the smaller groups, there's a lot more risk-taking. They're able to teach each other. They ask each other for strategies, and they have a lot more perseverance, and they choose to go ahead and do the problems that are harder for them. And we are pleased to announce that we hear them saying all the time, "I can do hard things." And we have taken a lot of the math anxiety out. Kids who come in in September and are saying, "I'm terrible at math and I can't do this," are now really confident mathematicians. And that is the whole point of what we do in our classrooms every day.
When you walk into the classroom, everybody is up. The discussions that the kids have, it's just amazing to hear what they talk about and how they problem-solve their ways through it. It's just everybody's hands-on. Everybody's up and involved. It's neat to see.
And we didn't do it for today because we had a couple other things, and the kids were like, "Aren't we getting up to the game boards? Aren't we getting up to the boards?" So, some of them really look forward to it. Most of them do.
They do. And the retention of the items that we have gone over last throughout the year, which is what really surprised me last year. So, they're really actually learning the concepts that we're teaching, and they're retaining them throughout the school year.
Okay, thanks for getting with Megan Kelhoffer and Allison Makinda to talk a little bit about flexible seating.
I'm Allison, and I teach third grade ELA, and then Megan Kelhoffer, I teach second grade all subjects. Megan and I have been both working collaboratively on building more flexible seating in our classrooms and providing more choice for our students. So, this first video is just a little bit of a tour of some of the flexible seating that we have in our classroom, and the kids are explaining it.
You guys have more questions? And it makes us feel like we're... This is the old math. I like it because it's because it's big. I like it because it's very comfortable. These are all rollers, and we like them because they help us focus and have good writing. These are the directed chairs, and they help me, and they help us do tests on these. These are the directors. We like these because they help us work better. These are... Almost close.
So, a lot of the seating she has in third grade is different than the seating that I have in second grade. We tried to do some second grade videos as well, but theirs are very much like, "I like to move, and it's fun to huddle, and I like to move." And so, like, some of the things that I've noticed in my classroom is the collaborative nature of flexible seating, and it is really getting the students to work together in a way that I think is going to benefit them as they're getting older and then also later on in life, that they're learning to talk with each other collaboratively, they're learning to work in groups. But there are also kids who like to work by themselves, and they have those options too. So, they get to try out different things. In my room, they get to choose their flexible seat each day, and there's enough that they have plenty of choice. And so, if there's a time during the day they want to be isolated, they can be, or if they want to work in a group, they can be. So, it's a lot of ownership for the children about how they learn best. This is just our writing workshop. So, you can see this is the time where students are working independently, but they're freely getting up to give if they need. We have some helpful tools for spelling that they're just moving to do what they need to do. So, it's giving them a lot of ownership of their learning and a lot of control over what they're doing. You can see they're being, like, productive and writing, and so, the seats give them a lot of opportunity to find a spot that works for them. For some kids, it gives them an opportunity to move and get energy out. For some of the other kids, it gives them a more isolated spot that they can focus a little bit better. We did take the next couple slides are just pictures of the second graders. And then, those are the things like I have. I have some of similar things that she has, but mine are more situated into areas where they can sit and work.
Can I just say, for both of these groups, they took this on themselves and spent their summer, like, the math, you guys spent the whole summer reading about this, and then they just came and asked me, "Can we get whiteboards?" I'm like, "Absolutely, get the whiteboards." These guys, Allison painted part of her classroom this year. They were in, like, all month of August getting this stuff set up and really excited about it, and it's transferred right to the students.
Megan's on Facebook Marketplace.
Yes.
Every day. Trying to straighten my hair.
Most of the things that we have in our classrooms have been purchased through Facebook Marketplace or begging family members.
Both friends.
So, we're going to talk now about the One School, One Book program, and I forgot to introduce our very important guest, the students. Jaden Almarado, if you want to raise your hand, Jaden. He's a third grader, and he's going to share some creative writing that he did through the Almost Super book. And then, we have Sammy Bapti. He's a fourth grader with us, and he's going to share an essay that he wrote about a superpower. So, we'll talk about that next.
Okay, we have done this for several years. This year, we are reading Almost Super, and it's by Marion Jensen, and it is a superhero book where the kids, you guys can help me here, they got their powers on leap year at, like, 4:20, 4:15, and they were not useful. They did not get useful ones. One is a belly button that comes from an innie to an outie. And we just have had so much fun with it, the kids have really loved the book. We had a kickoff assembly where the, we, there's two families, and we made the kids be the Baileys and the Johnsons, and they didn't know anything what that actually meant until they started reading the book. And we did Minute to Win It games, and we got the adults that were there involved as well. Mr. Kirbine was wrapped up in crank paper because we were capturing the bad guys. And then, every day, we do daily trivia. We have a little scavenger hunt where the kids are going around and they're finding superhero cards that I have hidden throughout the building, one on the first floor, one on the second floor. We had mystery readers, and the staff at Melrose stepped forward, and a lot of them read, as well as a lot of central office staff. We also, right now, are making superhero masks, and I just put a display in the library of our superhero masks, and that was something that we made at home. Each child was asked to write about what superhero power they would like to have. This is Jaden, a third grader. Go ahead. Nice laugh.
I would want to be invincible, and what I would use it for is to be a superhero, to stop villains and to help the police, because then I would be a superhero. The next thing I would do is to make more people recycle, to make people pick up garbage. The next thing I would do is to help other superheroes, then I would be a nice superhero. That's how I will make the world a better place.
If I had a superpower, I would like it to be able to travel between universes because I could get tools from different universes beyond our technology. This could solve many things. I could discover things. I could see quantum physics beyond us, plans we don't even know of. My name is Samuel Bapti, but my super name is Mirage. I could fight for every universe. Think of what peace they could make. I could do this for people, and the people could do the same thing, but they would have to come with me. I could stop catastrophes. I could get things for homeless. I could ask for stuff from other universes to stop world hunger. I could go to another universe and come back, show up behind a bad guy, and whack him. I could put their, I could put their weapon in a different universe, and the bad guy couldn't fight. My weakness is hiccup. I travel each time I hiccup. Another weakness is nothing else. I can never die from anything. I'm made out of an indestructible material. I also have a sidekick named Alex, aka the Shifter. He can turn into anything. He is famous for turning into air. No one can kill him in air form. I'm his sidekick, and he's my sidekick. How do I go to different universes? I get called on a multiverse phone, and then I think of the place I want to go, and boom, I go there. So, now, you know, if I was a superhero, I would want to be this.
That's what's happening at Melrose?
We need all you guys to go back up there because Mr. Gracy is going to... The kids too.
Come on, guys. Come on, Jay.
Guys, I thought you were going to get out of here. I thought you were going to call me.
Maybe we're out here during the whole time. Scotty? What a great job you did.
Thank you.
Feel like smiling.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up here, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's so hot.
I'm so glad you're here.
I know. I'm very distracted.
That would be interesting.
Yes, we have one more second special report, and then it will be presented by Cheryl Lanning, our Director of Student Services, and she's going to report to the board on our student wellness and success fund use.
I feel like it's always hard to follow a presentation by one of our school buildings, but I'll try. It's not going to be as fun. It's a lot worse.
Exactly.
That's the problem. I know.
No pictures.
I know.
And then, one more direction.
These were the same ones they ran out of.
This is the thing.
Oh, so I took them down.
Yeah.
Keep going.
I have nothing.
Oh, yeah. Wait, did you see Mr. Retino?
You're not done?
That was the funniest slide.
Mr. Retino takes his job very...
Super.
That's right.
That's how they do this reading.
That's how they do this reading.
He read it.
Okay.
And on that note, we're going to talk about student wellness and success funds. So, the student wellness and success funds, we have several allowable uses that include mental health services, physical health services, culturally appropriate prevention services, homeless youth services, community liaisons and programming, family engagement activities, and before and after school programming. There are new requirements for 2023, 24 in terms of how we spend our student wellness and success funds, and we are required to spend at least 50% of student wellness and success funds on physical or mental health services. We have to develop a plan for using student wellness and success funds in collaboration with both the community mental health provider or treatment provider or local alcohol, drug addiction and mental health service board, which is the Adams Board, or another community partner. We also have to share the student wellness and success fund plan with local Board of Education and post to the district website within 30 days after development or amendment of the plan, hence the presentation this evening. The current allocation for the 2023-24 school year was $200,096.93. The community partners that we engage with are Signature Health, the E S T of the Western Reserve, and Crossroads Health. The uses include mental health services with Signature Health and Crossroads, and then also a student success coordinator. Mental health services include diagnostic assessments, individual counseling, group counseling, student assistance programs such as staff training, ongoing consultation, and classroom presentations, case management, which is helping to link families to community resources, and then risk and threat assessments or threat assessment team participation. Our staffing for this school year, in every one of our, three out of four elementary buildings, we have one full-time mental health provider. We have one building, Hart Side, that has a provider three days a week. That is really due to the inability to find a full-time provider. So, the hope was that we could find somebody five days a week, but right now, we're being staffed three days a week. And then, LeMuth also has a full-time provider, and the high school campus has two full-time counselors there. That is a significant increase over previous years. There were many years where we had, someone hit the campus only four days a week. The numbers I'm giving you here, how we used the, or in terms of services, how many students were serviced over the course of last school year, because obviously, we're only into the second quarter of this year, so I thought it would be better to see the total number of students that were served last school year, which through Signature Health, we were able to service 122 total students, 28 at Melrose, 20 at Buckeye, and here at the high school campus, 74 students. An additional 20 students were serviced through group-type services. The cost that that was to the district was $105,095. Crossroads, in addition, served an additional 131 students. At Hart Side, 28 students. At Riverdew 56, and at LeMuth Middle School, 47 students. That was, the cost to the district was $107,000. There is both Signature Health and Crossroads to deduct students who are Medicaid eligible, that's deducted, as well as the Adams Boards where Crossroads kicks in a certain amount of that. What I gave you was the cost that was strictly to the district. And then, I wanted to end on a note in terms of resources, Signature Health contact number, Crossroads Health, and then the Lake County Crisis Hotline. Any questions?
Yeah, so, on the very first slide, you talked about culturally appropriate intervention. What does, can you give an example of that or elaborate on what that means?
So, for the most part, let me go back and see exactly what it says. I think that is...
It's allowable.
It's what we can use the money for. So, those are, that is what the state has determined that we can use the money for in terms of, oops, sorry. Is this the one?
Yeah. Culturally appropriate intervention.
Right. If there were any culturally appropriate prevention services that we wanted to engage in. We are doing it more for mental health programming, but those are all the things that exist under the ability to spend these funds, what those funds could be allocated for and used for.
Okay. Let me stop by after the, if you need more information. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And that ends our special reports.
So, that brings us to all business. So, did I receive anything to be able to do business? New business? All right. That brings us to new business. There was one item we wanted to discuss about new business, and that is liaison roles. So, we were looking at the different liaison roles, and there's, sorry, strategic plan liaison was the one that really kind of came up, but what does that liaison do? So, the strategic plan liaison, like, what does that liaison really do, you know, as far as consulting or engaging? So, we were talking, how's the way for liaison roles? And we just want to bring that and have some open discussion and see.
I think it's part of, part of the reason I think we had talked about it, at least Lori and I had talked about it, is because the strategic plan, we now are focusing on that at every meeting and through every communication that comes to the board. In our Friday packet, we're talking about the strategic plan and how everything that we're doing aligns with the goals for the strategic plan. So, at least, I've been the strategic plan liaison, and I never have an update because we keep getting the updates from the administration. So, I didn't know if that was quite necessary to have that anymore. Maybe we could move on to something else.
Is there a better place to put somebody to focus and work with the district or be that liaison? So, it's not to come to an answer, it's to think about and to say, is there something as we go into January for our business meeting where we start assigning those? Is there someplace?
Well, we had even talked about one. Oh, I forget. Student, like, a student advisory committee of some sort, like, we don't have one, a student and parent advisory, like, we have a business advisory, we have a legislative liaison and whatnot. We don't have anybody who, from the board, focuses on student or parent sort of things.
So, I don't know about the parent aspect, but maybe an interface with the student counselor.
So, that was just a suggestion that we had talked about. So, if we want to consider something maybe between December and December of the year or whatever, right, December, before we start, you know, assigning some things in January organization, we can have some conversation on that.
So, yeah, we'll just start thinking about it. If we decide that's the right liaison role still, then that's fine. We'll just, is there more value somewhere else? Because even when I serve strategic plan liaison, you'd get updates, but they're all being provided regularly anyways. Any initial thoughts or...
So, you're looking for more of a challenge instead of an easier role?
Well, you know, our job is to engage and to help.
Type up the game, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, so, any ideas, appreciated, any concerns about thinking about that? That was the only new business, but by email to the board, is there any other new business from the board? All right, we do have one other piece of new business, discussion regarding the 2023-24 calendar, the 2024-25 calendar, and the 2025-26 calendar for the school year. So, is there any...
Yeah, I would like to see if we could come back to that possibly. I would like Dr. Retino to be able to address that. I don't want to miss anything. I think what he wants to address with the, with the board is the fact that instead of us doing one calendar, he's looking at a two-year calendar, which are very similar. I mean, they really are almost identical.
Signature Health contact number, Crossroads Health, and then the Lake County Crisis Hotline. Any questions?
So on the very first slide, you talked about culturally appropriate intervention. What does, can you give an example of that, or elaborate on what that means?
So for the most part, let me go back and see exactly what it says. I think that is. It's what we can use the money for. So those are, that is what the state has determined that we can use the money for in terms of, oops, sorry. Is this the one?
Yeah. Culturally appropriate intervention.
Right. If there were any culturally appropriate prevention services that we wanted to engage in. We are doing it more for mental health programming, but those are all the things that exist under the ability to spend these funds, what those funds could be allocated for and used for.
Okay. Let me stop by after the, if you need more information. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And that ends our special reports.
Thank you. So that brings us to all business. So did I receive anything to get into your business? New business? All right. That brings us to new business. There was one item we wanted to discuss about new business, and that is liaison roles. So we're looking at the different liaison roles, and there's, sorry, strategic plan liaison was the one that really kind of came up, of what does that liaison do? So the strategic plan liaison. Like, what does that liaison really do, you know, as far as consulting or engaging? So we were talking, how's the way for liaison roles? And we just want to bring that and have some open discussion and see.
I think it's part of, part of the reason I think we had talked about it, at least Lori and I had talked about it, is because the strategic plan, we now are focusing on that at every meeting and through every communication that comes to the board. In our Friday packet, we're talking about the strategic plan and how everything that we're doing aligns with the goals for the strategic plan. So at least I've been the strategic plan liaison, and I never have an update because we keep getting the updates from the administration. So I didn't know if that was quite necessary to have that anymore. Maybe we could move on to something else.
Is there a better place to put somebody to focus and work with the district or be that liaison? So it's not to come to an answer, it's to think about and to say, is there something as we go into January for our business meeting where we start assigning those? Is there someplace?
Well, we had even talked about one. Oh, I forget. Student, like a student advisory committee of some sort. Like, we don't have one, a student and parent advisory. Like, we have a business advisory, we have a legislative liaison and whatnot. We don't have anybody who, from the board, focuses on student or parent sort of things.
So I don't know about the parent aspect, but maybe an interface with the student counselor.
So that was just a suggestion that we had talked about. So if we want to consider something maybe between now and December, the first of the year, whatever, right, December, before we start, you know, assigning some things in January, organization, we can have some conversation on that.
So we'll just start thinking about it. If we decide that's the right liaison role still, then that's fine. We'll just, is there more value somewhere else? Because even when I serve as strategic plan liaison, you'd get updates, but they're all being provided regularly anyways. Any initial thoughts, or?
So you're looking for more of a challenge instead of an easier, easier role?
Well, you know, our job is to engage and to help.
Type of up the game, right?
So, yeah, so any ideas, appreciated, and any concerns about thinking about that? That was the only new business, but by email to the board, is there any other new business from the board? All right, we do have one other piece of new business, discussion regarding the 2023-24 calendar, the 2024-2025 calendar, and the 2025-2026 calendar for the school year. So is there any?
Yeah, I would like to see if we could come back to that possibly. I would like Dr. Retino to be able to address that, I don't want to miss anything. I think what he wants to address with the, with the board is the fact that instead of us doing one calendar, he's looking at a two-year calendar, which are very similar. I mean, they really are almost identical, with the exception of, he might be here in the hallway. Or the exception of Eastern, which fluctuates a little.
Oh, speak it up.
And as I delayed long enough, Dr. Retino's there to talk about the calendars.
We got to see you in your superhero costume by the end. Melridge made sure they.
Oh, I know, I saw it. That's super nice of them.
And I believe the 2023-24 is going to address the clammy day in the year.
The class. Oh, okay. So we were on the calendar, we're helping new business. So I don't know if there's anything you want to?
So later in the presentation, my presentation, I had to kind of explain a little bit what's going on with the two calendars, we have two years coming up. First, hearing tonight, and then you actually vote on that in January because it does require 30 days for comments. So today is just the presentation of that, and then we have to vote in June.
Any initial questions? For more women? All right, so that brings us to our Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. The first one is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. We did not have a business advisory meeting. There is one on the calendar, I.
November 30th?
November 30th, thank you. So there will be an update during the next meeting. That brings us to Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association Liaison. Mr. Official?
And likewise, there was no curriculum meeting, and I was out of town for the one night association meeting. So I was out of town because I went to the great place of the Grand Canyon and just did a little walk to the park, down to the Colorado River, and back out at 17 miles, and just got back today. Anyway, we will have a meeting scheduled for December 12th, and we'll go over a few items and update everyone at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next is Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mr. Hack.
All right, so we had a meeting on November 6th. Just a couple of highlights. Lots of things in progress. There was a discussion about the all-weather turf that we have on the football field. It has a lifespan of approximately 10 to 12 years. We had an assessment come, you know, so the company that we've hired to actually maintain it came in. They have approximately another five or so years, five to seven years, and that can have led into a conversation of setting aside money to replace it. It's not as expensive to replace the turf as it is to install it, but it's still going to be a fair amount of money. So we talked with Mr. Paco, who was in the meeting as well, about creating a sinking fund, if you will, I think that's not the right term, but a set aside fund to allow us to replace it without having to scramble at the time that we need the money. Is that something we discuss at future meetings, or?
Yeah, we're going to discuss it next meeting. There's some things we may go through before we make a final decision.
You bet. But the bottom line is, we're trying to make sure that we don't have any surprises or any need that we have not accounted for from a financial perspective. Many people are familiar from their time or have the students at Lamuth, that the football field is not in good shape. Typically, it's a lot of use, it's a natural field, so getting it to recede and come back to life is always a challenge. But as it turns out, we have found a company that actually is in Lake County called Lewis Landscaping and Nursery. And so we're going to see if they can help us revitalize that field and make it, and create a better, higher level of playing field for the various sports that are on there. And if that works, we might expand that to other fields as well here at the campus and elsewhere in Riverside. So we will actually, I believe it's on the agenda, we'll be voting on that contract.
It's actually going forward, that is, as well, the approval thresholds. We had opportunity to get the work done this season, so we actually started that, we actually started that in.
Uh, November 8th, yes.
Terrific.
I think they're, I think they're done with the, with the field, and it just needs to grow and kind of take the season to grow in and take root.
And are we happy with the work?
So far.
Okay, good.
We'll see. We'll see in the spring.
Right, today was a sunny day, so maybe it all took root.
Can I ask you just a quick question on that? So that field's used by a lot of teens, middle school.
It's currently roped off.
So is there other places, like, we'll be helping find other locations for those teens to practice?
We can, we can work for that as well.
All right, I just, I was curious. Gets a lot of use.
Yeah, that's, there's other facilities now of plan that we have moving forward that we have to.
All right. So additionally, we had all the lights at the fieldhouse were updated so that replaced, so that we now have fully illuminated playing surfaces in the fieldhouse and for the audience as well, so we can use it both for athletic events, as well as for, you know, assemblies and things like that. The modular classroom, we are moving forward, and I believe we have a contract that we're wanting to vote on this afternoon, this evening, to do some electrical work on the modular unit. And Mr. Olestic, would you be kind enough to just give us an update so that everybody can understand with great anticipation how things are moving?
It is actually at Buckeye, as we speak.
Wow.
The footers were poured yesterday, and the tentative date to put the unit on its footers is a week from Monday. So once the modular, once the unit gets put together, bolted together, then the next steps will be installing the new doors, the new carpeting, the new LED lighting in the building. And we're also working to get the illuminating company to not put us on hold for seven and a half hours, to get them to give us a work request number so we can get the transformer put on the pole so we can energize the modular units in time for next semester. So that's my new hurdle. So so far, I got it there, and now I have to energize it.
Significant progress.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I, I know you spearheaded a lot of that effort, and there are other people involved, but thank you for seeing that through to near fruition, and fruition is not very far away. Terrific, that's very good news. We also already mentioned, talking about the football field here at Lamuth, or at Riverdew Campus, and so that inspection went well. Most, you know, a lot of, a lot of fields actually don't necessarily last 10 years, they best 10 years minimum. I think that the bottom line is, we've done a really terrific job of maintaining the field, which is, has set us up to have longer life than the typical, the typical school. Additionally, one of the things that if you've been paying attention to Buildings and Grounds over time, and I know all of you have, because it's a very exciting update, the, we have issues with our baseball fields here at the campus. And so based on the performance and how things work out at Lamuth with improving the football field, we would then talk about doing some things here at Riverside. And, and are we? So I looked at the, at the agenda, and under Buildings and Grounds, we're talking about the track, which I'll get to, and Jim's Electric for the, for the, for the modular unit going in at Buckeye. If things go well at Lamuth, and the seed takes, and the grass takes, then we would look to potentially engage with Lewis Landscaping as well to do some work on the, on the baseball fields. Truly, truly an issue, they really are not in good shape, and this would be, you know, a semi-feather in our cap because they wouldn't be perfect, but they would be much more playable. And then the other thing that we discussed in a fair amount of detail is moving forward with the replacement of the track. That's something that's been mentioned before. The rubberized surface has peeled away in many places from the asphalt base. So, and we've had it for over 20 years. So we definitely, as a district, have gotten the, our money's worth on the track. Nothing lasts forever. So we are actually going to move forward with the first step of replacing that by bringing TBA on to do the architectural drawings and work to set us up so that as soon as graduation is over in this coming June, 2024, the next day, we will be pulling up the old rubberized surface, seeing what needs to be done to the asphalt, and then bringing that back and hopefully getting it in place before the start of school in the 2024, 2025 school year. So with that, I think that is all I had. Mrs. Grassi, you were there as well, did I miss anything?
Uh, I don't think so. We talked about Orca Pond, but we're good.
We did. I, but I, well, is, does Orca Pond still exist?
Orca Pond still exists, they are mobilizing the equipment tomorrow.
They're mobilizing the amphibious assault?
Yes, they are.
Terrific. With that, I believe that is, that is, that is my report.
Thank you.
Actually, let me, since it's liaison as well, I am sorry to drone on, but, but you know what, what the heck. So I did attend as the delegate for our, our board, went down to the OSBA Capital Conference this week. They had a legislative session. There were two items that were voted on. Both of them dealt with, with special needs students and being able to stay longer. They already are able to stay longer than their graduation date, but there was a move to change the legislative platform for OSBA to, to advance within the legislature to have those students not necessarily count against our graduation rate. So the bottom line is, they passed basically unanimously. So those are part of the legislative platform, and we're ready to go. Now, I think I'm done.
Thank you.
How long was it meeting?
It was very brief. Compared to last year. It was a lot of formality, it's the actual session itself, when we discussed it, was probably 15 minutes.
That brings us to Policy Committee and Booster Organization Liaison. Ms. Harden is not here. Who's this on the committee?
I, I did. So, look, I can go, I can just do that. So we did have a policy meeting. We reviewed the various policy updates that are recommended by Niola. We went through them pretty thoroughly. We, the, the policy committee recommends that the board approve them. There was no issue.
Thank you.
They're on today's January, first January person.
All right, that brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
All right. So first thing I have is Friday, as, you know, Friday the 10th was the anniversary of Veterans Day, the holiday next July 11th. And all of our school buildings, except Lamuth, opened its doors to local veterans to celebrate them for Veterans Day. Lamuth, Pat, you were saying that Dr. Bass, she got the collar messed up. They scheduled it today, or yesterday?
We had our breakfast.
Yeah, they did breakfast today. They did something on Veterans Day as well to recognize them. They did a supper where they brought veterans in. I happened to attend the high school one, it was amazing. Really kind of brought a lot of veterans in. Kids read stories, their personal narrative about it. Neither one's didn't, didn't have the last page of his composure to his story. Waited, and it was very nerve-wracking for all those people to have, was able to finish his story. It was a, it was a great, great event for all, so. Another, another feather in our cap for our district to kind of our service, for us to be, you know, the armed forces. As mentioned earlier, as I walked in, there is no school on April 8th. We're not going to bring students or teachers in because of these scheduled polar eclipse. We've kind of been warned by Lake County Emergency Management, that Lake County is expecting over a million, actually 100,000 of yours to a million of people. In fact, if you look at the hotels for April 8th, and try to book a hotel room on the 7th, they're sold out. And actually, the B and Bs and all that are kind of still, but as well, because this is one of the prime locations to view this total solar eclipse. I did get some information on the past 10 years of history of the day and the weather, and I think for 70%, it's been snowing or cloudy and rainy. So we're hoping for a great day so we can see it, but the timing of the event is during our dismissal. It does lead to some traffic concerns, as well as just traffic backed up, and it's our best bet to come for our students and student drivers, especially officers at that time, and kind of in a safe area. So I do know that Lake Metro Parks and Geogroup Metro Parks are having some special eclipse event viewing sites, but we'll let diverse students the opportunity to visit there and not necessarily trying to dismiss them from school, which is, could be a challenge. Tonight was the Senior Citizen Appreciation Night, first of two. We had more than 120 seniors join us for a free dinner, put on by our, our own students. It was a wonderful event. Special thanks to Mrs. Brandhoff's class of preparing. I nothing but great positive reviews from the food, from the dinner prepared. Really, really great event for them as well. And it was also the opening of Puffs, which is why I was personally late. The fall play kicked off tonight. It's a wonderful show. There are two more, there's one tomorrow and one on Saturday. I encourage you to get out and get it, especially if you're, or have a student who is a fan of that wizard novel that rhymes with Mary Dodder. We can't associate it, but it is, it's a great, it was a water performance. Our kids do great, and it was just the way that they utilized the new projector and kind of in the scenery and all that, it was really kind of a testament to, you know, bringing something in and having something new yet, and then immediately putting it in place and watching our kids really thrive, and it was, it was great. So real proud, yeah, in all for myself as well, because I don't have a chance to be involved in it. She rocked it, so. Another great moment for us, Airgas paid a donation to our welding lab. On the November 9th, everybody came in and donated a Hubble thermoplasma cutter to our welding lab, which is a around $4,000 piece of equipment, somewhere around there. They also, their staff also spent the day working with the students on how to use the tools. They didn't just drop it off and say, here you go, good luck. They actually trained them in how to use it. So it was a really neat opportunity for our welding students. I mean, again, it's a first-class facility down there, and we're really excited for the future of that lab. And I'm going to go down there, and there are opportunities. As Miss, we are completed with all of our fall seasons now, and we're going into the winter season, but I want to congratulate all of our fall varsity sports teams for their incredible seasons. Our boys soccer team finished second in WRC and they are being sectional champs. Our girls soccer were fourth in the WRC, and they were sectional runner-up. Golf is undefeated, they were WRC champs, and they advanced the districts. We have some great golfers, and they continue that along the way. Tennis was fourth in the Western Reserve Conference. Our boys cross country as a team finished third in the conference, and we had two athletes, John Young and Mason Weber, to advance the regional meet. Girls cross country finished one ahead of the boys, second in the Western Reserve Conference, and Megan Salt, then advanced to the regionals, so super proud of them. Volleyball finished second in the WRC, they were sectional champs. They ended up losing in the regional semifinals to Mentor, unfortunately. And football was eight and two for their season. They finished third in the WRC, their two losses were to WRC teams, and they were regional semifinals to sell their season end. This last Friday night, two Akron Hovens, who will probably be the state champion, it was an amazing, it was a great game, losing 21-0. And actually, they, the first, one of the first series of offense, one of the Hovens teams faded and played, just like you see in the Bronski, where he reached out and passed to the flag in one hand and just ran it for six. So we started the game off down 7-0, and this came back and bought throughout the entire game. So super proud of all of our fall athletes and all of our fall teams, and it was a great season for all. So yet another success on the athletics field as well. Mr. Hack kind of mentioned this a little bit, but a facility is updated, and kind of the plan as to where we're going and where we're moving with this. The reason behind the track resurfacing is that surface is over 20 years old, that all-weather surface. We anticipate the start date of that being June 3rd. That's the Monday after graduation. We would give the company a little bit of time to clear off the field. With that, at times, we know that that track, which is used by the community, and also our, our athletes in the summer will not be available to them during the summer. Also, that, you know, Mr. Bohrs know, as well as the coaches know, kind of where they're going to have to change some of their, where they practice and that sort of thing because of the construction that's going on. With the Lamuth Field as well, the same type of issue. We needed this, and this came to need because of our, the increased activities and the increased availability of sports for our kids, and how we needed additional field. They need a field that is safe to plant, so they were filling a lot of holes and all that. They started that already in November, and the completion date is they're done with the work, but then it does need to kind of grow in and take seeds and all that, so we think that it'll be playable, you know, late fall, for the fall season in next year. So we'll be ready for that. And then he did mention the varsity baseball and softball field reconditioning. What this company does, they come in and they strip the entire field, they re-center it based on the fall polls, because over time, things can shift, and it can be oft, to make it a true field with the, with the correct angles. We would like to anticipate that start date in May after the conclusion of varsity baseball and softball. So hopefully, if our teams actually make a good run, we would push it back to June. But typically, if they're in the state finals, those final games are in June. But if not, we would anticipate it in May after the conclusion. And knowing that both Field One and the softball field will not be available for recreational summer use or ball-ball use, but that would take, and be ready to go for that the upcoming season. It won't eliminate, it won't be perfect, it won't eliminate all round, just a little round, but the significant rounds will be less, as well as there are some other issues with the outfield that this won't address, but it'll be a complete and significant upgrade. But yeah, we'll get more games in along with, so that we can have, so this kind of host these varsity events. Upcoming, December 2nd, the Holly Frozen Edition. Uh, upcoming, December second, the Holly Frozen Edition, uh, is the summer second, from twelve to three, Riverside Campus. Uh, this is a family-friendly event that's free to the community and coordinated by the RHS side leadership, it's a great thing. Um, there'll be all kinds of different activities for young kids to come join, and it's open to all families in the district from, uh, the second, uh, for some holiday facilities. Uh, I did mention that we do have two school calendars up for a hearing tonight, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is a change from previous years, we're trying to get calendars out in advance, uh, we've heard that a lot about, you know, from families and feedback that, hey, we can kind of get some things in, um, along the way in the future, so it's one of the things we are trying to do. Uh, the goals they have is approved in January, the calendars don't show any significant change from this year, spring break is still the last week of March, uh, as it typically is. I do have, um, you know, just to confirm with Auburn that the twenty-five, twenty-six one will be that last week of March, as it traditionally is, because, uh, actually Easter is the following week, so there may be a, it's a, it's a spring break, come back for a forty-week, and then a forty-week, which is not, it's not atypical for other schools, years to have kind of two forty weeks in a row after that, uh, definitely doable, so we're just making sure that it's the same. When I reached out to Auburn about that, the two-year in advance, Auburn even said, wow, we've never done two years in advance, so it's great, it's a great idea. Uh, so it's really something that we've, we've heard from our families, they would like to kind of see that, so we're trying to get that through so we can kind of communicate those early to our families, and those include things like, um, all of our professional development days, they do not include conferences, open houses, those will get added along the way, but these are just the days only students will be in session and will be out. Uh, and finally, congratulations, um, you know, congratulations to Mrs. Krenisky, uh, for reelection, as well as congratulations and welcome to Mrs. Bruce, who's in the front, um, for, you know, our new board members, before moving forward with the board. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I kept it quick, I'm going to have to find the forecast.
Alright, so that brings us to Treasures Report and the Committee Update, so Finance, Audit, and Personnel Committee and Strategic Plan Liaison, Mrs. Grassi? I have absolutely nothing there, of course, because we didn't have a meeting, we were supposed to have a meeting last week, and I was, um, not feeling well, so we canceled it, Mr. Fishel was out of town, so we just distributed the five-year forecast through the Friday Yacka, and hopefully everybody has had a chance to take it with them, so. Anything else? Thank you. So that brings us then to the Committee and the Treasure.
Alright. Before we get into the five-year forecast, just have a couple, uh, updates on our monthly financials that go through each month. And, um, as, as we always say, it, it, our monthly financial reports are available on Word docs on our Treasure page. And so the October report, the total cash balance of all funds is about forty-five point eight million. Of that, uh, twenty-nine point four million is our general fund balance. The permanent fund balance right now was just shy of six point eight million, that's what's left as unencumbered, cat account prior, but we had some projects, good festival project, plus a number of things like that, but our available cash right now is six point eight million for, for other purposes. We are currently thirty-three percent through the fiscal year, our revenues are currently sitting at eighty-five percent of our investment, and because of, you know, the property tax being, uh, larger settlement in July and August, so we tend to move ahead and then we'll, we'll go back on, uh, a little bit further. expenditures are currently at thirty-one percent, so which currently coming into our budget for our general fund. Uh, our October revenue was just over three million dollars for the general fund, this includes eight hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in unrestricted state foundation payments, as our state funding from the state of Ohio, uh, as we discussed last month. You know, they have the payment reports this month, so what they do when they, because of the new binding budget, they pay us basically what we've been owed, you know, from the prior months that were shorter, we, 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 so that's why it's higher this month, it'll go back to normal amounts in future months. And also a, uh, just shy of one point nine million dollar homestead rollback reimbursements, this is a portion of the prop, of your property tax, the state pays on your behalf, uh, that we have reimbursed for, so that came in this month as well. Interest revenue is a hundred and two thousand dollars for October, we're currently getting, uh, five point five seven percent in our Star Ohio account. Our retro investment account, which has longer-term investments, is a three point one four percent, overall, a four point seven one percent in our October, which is just over four million dollars for October. So that takes us to the five-year forecast, uh, presentation, I did hand out the five-year forecast to you, and an additional slide of print, uh, towards the end. The five-year forecast is also posted in Word docs and will be on the website, and I have to update the presentation and add that on site, it's, uh, down here, so. So the Department of Education workforce to do, as we call them now, um, has developed a guide to help, uh, understand the five-year forecast and what goes into it, um, there's a link to that guide up here on the slide. And it was actually last updated in two thousand and eleven, um, some substantial changes have been done to, uh, state funding and other revenue, so that must have outdated, but, uh, the rest is still outstanding. The five-year forecast, uh, contains estimates based on the best information available, the time is prepared, and we're, have to file that with D W M, uh, at the end of each year. And it contains three years of historical data with five years of forecasted data, we're currently in fiscal year twenty-four, which is the first year of forecasted data. And it's important to look at the assumptions of the forecast, because it tells a lot of the detail what goes into those numbers, and then our forecast includes both the general fund and revenue from the Lake County School and Financing District. So an executive overview, uh, we're, we're solving through fiscal year twenty-twenty-eight, which is our forecast at this point. We're projecting that spending starting in fiscal year twenty-five, based on our current assumptions, and that's where expenditures start to exceed our revenues. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which is two years prior, has been the new state budget, the funding formula went into place. So we are currently in, in twenty-twenty-four, we're in our third year of the phase-in of that formula, it's supposed to be a six-year phase-in, but the legislature couldn't commit to that because they only do two budgets, but we're kind of in a tentative six-year phase-in. In the forecast, we're essentially forecasting two state binding budgets, one starting in twenty-twenty-six and one starting in twenty-twenty-eight, and as you know, we don't really know what will happen until those times come. But as of right now, everything indicates that the phase-in of the fair school funding plan will continue, um, we're on target for that, but it's never guaranteed until it's approved. This slide here is a real short summary of our forecast, um, so our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four projection, we're starting with a cash balance of twenty-five point six million. Total revenues, fifty-two million, expenditures, fifty-one point seven, where the surplus is about two hundred and forty-five thousand, which will reduce our cash balance to twenty-six million. And then in future years, as you can see, as expenditures rise, you know, our revenues go up a little bit, and we'll talk about that in more and more detail. We started to spend as we expected, um, we've talked about this for years now, uh, but now we're in twenty-twenty-five, without spending, and we can see our current cash balance will. This is a chart that, um, if I had showed part of yours, the green would be much higher than the, than the red, but the green represents our revenues, the red represents our expenditures. This is to kind of show that expenditures tend to grow faster than revenues, where revenues tend to stay relatively flat over time, so right now our revenue growth is about one point three-two percent, expenditures one point four point seven six. This slide here is the pie graph of our current revenue sources, the big large blue section there, the general property tax revenue makes up about fifty-nine percent of our fifty-two million dollar revenue stream. In total, property taxes is thirty point seven million, the section of red on the left there, public utility and personal property tax, that's about six percent of our revenue, over two point nine million. The section of the green, it's about seven point six million, fifteen percent of our revenue, that's unrestricted grants and aid, that's our state funding, that's our homestead, and there's a little bit of casino revenue that goes into that property as well. And then we have some other smaller things there, unrestricted grants aid, we'll come up through that, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, which is the state budget as well. State share of local property taxes, they renamed that this year, it used to be called state property tax, and I, this is basically our homestead rollback reimbursements from the state, I don't know why they just call it that, they changed the name, still don't call it, but it is, that's about three point eight million, or seven percent of our revenue. And the large orange section at the top is all other revenues, that includes the Lake County School Financing District, which is about three point two million of that. The rest of that is paper, state fees, classroom fees, interest revenue, and rental revenue, anything else you can talk, you can think of, and then other financing sources, four hundred and thousand there, about one percent of our revenue. This slide here, we show each time we go through the forecast, this kind of shows a listing of our current levies. I added one bullet point at the bottom, it talks about the twenty mill floor. So the ones, it's a little hard to see, the ones in italics are the levies that go, that count towards twenty-four, I'll talk about that a little bit more later. Essentially, our inside village and what's considered current expense levies count towards twenty-four, so that total village is twenty-three point one, point oh-one right now, and I'll go through that a little bit more later, kind of explain what I'm talking about, because that's my, that's the factor for us. This is kind of the permanent school district tax rates in Lake County, uh, changes up to kind of show it in a graph, Riverside is third lowest, uh, tax, effective tax rate is thirty point oh-two mils. Add a little green section, kind of shows the financing district that applies to Painsville City, Riverside, Madison, Perry, even including that, we're still at the third lowest, uh, tax, school tax rate in the county. Perry's at the bottom, they have the power plant there, you know, so you kind of, don't really count them, but usually Riverside, Madison, or the second, third lowest, depending on who passed the, the latest, uh, last levy. On the expenditures side, our total expenditures are fifty-one point seven million, most of that made up of salary benefits, salaries and benefits make up thirty percent of our, our expenditures each year, and then purchase services is about fourteen percent of that, and the rest of the supply is, you know, we don't have any really capital outlay out of John Fund, either the firm improvement fund, and a few, uh, small others there as well. And then, our ending cash balance, the true cash balance in days, uh, the board approved the cash balance policy back in twenty-twenty-two, to talk about it, it's kind of the study of the parameter of when we start looking at, uh, when we can make expenditure cuts, going back on the balance, things like that, and. So we want to keep a cash balance of about ninety days, is what we're targeting for, as you can see, based on the current projections of twenty-twenty-seven, is when we start to dip below that, so, you know, depending on what goes on in the future, we will have to have discussions at some point, um, when we get to fiscal years out from that. Based on current projections, it is explicitly, we'll start talking about that, but there's a caveat to that as well. So what could change, I'm going to skip the first bullet point, because I have another slide on that, on property tax collections and evaluation. So as we mentioned before, the state binding budget, um, you know, likely continued to phase-in, we didn't project the increase in state funding, but, eh, things indicate that there'll be a transportation increase if the, if they continue to phase in a discretionary funding plan, but that's, you know, we'll know that more in, in the next fiscal year, if we follow it. Interest revenue is always hard to project because we're, you know, we've had large fluctuations over the last few years, interest rates are currently much higher than they have been in, in a very long time, and, you know, we'll start to lock in longer-term investments, but at the same time, you don't know, um, you know, I would expect it more likely to level up to decrease than to increase at this point, but, uh, you know, we're keeping it maximized, we're, we're going to those funds, um, and, um, we will adjust as we see fit. On the financial side, just looking at staffing levels and staffing shortages and needs, um, you know, the only good thing about staffing shortages is it saves money, but, uh, puts a lot of stress on those who are here. The, uh, American Rescue Plan, ESSER funds, running out this month, we're going to finalize, okay, we'll use those for like summer school, and then we, we're paying our safety officers for long-term schools, I had that coming back out of the general fund, you know, as we anticipated, um, so those funds will be gone at this point, and then, uh, healthcare is the other, uh, one that could fluctuate on that expense. We've had premium holidays the last, um, three or four years, each time we have a premium holiday, it's ages over half a million dollars. I don't anticipate another one this year, I said that last year, I'm going to have one, so, you know, we'll see what happens there, so that could change, and just the continued effects of inflation, supply chain issues. And, uh, lastly, just new housing development, you know, basement properties, just, you know, start to, some start, it's starting to happen over there, we'll see how that goes on, and, you know, what, what is that going to do to our.
When do they usually tell us about premium holiday?
It's typically like in the springtime, um.
After the year's closed, right?
It's, they, they kind of look at it throughout the year, but we typically, like, the health and source should meet for the, the general assembly every three or four months, and so typically, if, if, what they've done the last couple of years is, they, they decided to premium holiday, they can march April time, and either take it in June or July or split between the two quarters. So that's how they've been doing it the last couple of years, I would assume they can follow that same process this year. I believe actually on the help to the serving up Executive Committee, they're all in source of this year, so, much more involved than that. Okay, this slide here, I pass this out because it's a lot of numbers on here, and if you recall, uh, I mentioned a thing called the twenty mill floor, we haven't really talked about that all too much, because it really didn't apply to us for a long time. Some districts, that's part of the levy strategies, it's the twenty mill floor, as much as you have the twenty mill floor, what that basically is, is, you know, there's a, you know, with property taxes, you have inside village, and with inside village, that's your unvoted village, and as property values go up, it generates more revenue. As property values go down, you lose revenue. When you get to the twenty mill floor, so over time, these voting levies and current expense levies, so you add your current expense levies and your inside village together, where now we're at twenty-three point zero one mils. As values go up, those tax rates go down, but for school districts, once you hit twenty, it stops, it doesn't go down anymore. So essentially what happens is, that difference, that, you know, fifteen point two mils ends up becoming like inside village, and so as values go up, it's generating more revenue, and as it go down, uh, you know, we already have twenty mils, so it can't go down at any point, you know, just be generating more revenue as the valuations go up. In this version of the forecast, and, you know, I wanted to have a discussion, finance meeting, we obviously didn't have one, I project, I went, I decided over twenty percent projection increase, I had heard that it could be thirty to thirty-five percent, based on what's going on in the, you know, real estate market, what we're seeing in other counties that are going through it for tax year twenty-three, the county does it for tax year twenty-four, collection leaders twenty, twenty-five. There's also, we talked about last meeting, there's pending legislation out there, House Bill one, and also Senate Bill one, one fifty-three, that is talking about temporary three-year law, that would, you'd take a three-year average of those valuations, so it's basically softening that, that valuation increase for a short-term period. With all that said, so it's, it's kind of hard to project, project exactly what will that valuation increase be, because if it is thirty percent, and they pass this law, it's going to be reduced, and so I probably, I've already lost everyone at this point, but this, this chart is kind of showing at the top, so, when these valuation changes happen, there's three lines on the forecast that'll affect. The first line, general property tax, which is your commercial and res, your commercial residential property tax, and the other line, public utility, personal tax, also will be affected, and then state share of local property taxes, which are also that, all that can also change, um, from these, from when the valuations change. So, in our forecasting model, assuming that everything is correct, you know, the top lines is a twenty percent increase is what we're projecting in the forecast. Now I have three scenarios here, what is twenty-five percent, what is thirty percent, what is thirty-five percent, and how those numbers will change. So this second set here, it's a twenty-five percent increase in values, we're going to realize in fiscal year twenty-five, actually six hundred and twenty-eight thousand on top of what we've already realized from inside the middle two years, you'll see, you know, from fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five, it's about eight hundred thousand dollar increase. From twenty-five to twenty-six, it's about another, uh, six hundred thousand dollar increase, that's based on the twenty percent, uh, increase. The twenty-five percent increase, you will realize even more revenue in twenty-five, and then again in twenty-six, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand in twenty-twenty-five, one point one seven million in twenty-twenty-six, and you can see if a twenty percent increase, or even, or a, excuse me, thirty percent increase, that number is much more substantial, and thirty-five percent increase, which I've heard people have commented that, you're going to have one point eight million, that's, that's substantial.
If, if the bills pass, and they're going to do a three-year average, I mean, you could go down to twelve percent.
It, it could be, yeah. So it's, it's hard to really know.
So just the, the effect of the legislation could go lower than the numbers they can project, lower than the twenty percent?
It's possible to be.
Yes.
So it's kind of, throwing a dart at the airport at this point, um, but we just have to keep that in mind, that this is. So it's kind of throwing a dart at their board at this point, um, but we just have to keep that in mind that this is going to change, it's just, we don't know how it's going to change. Um, there's talks that, because the House bill one eighty-seven passed the House, but now it's been kind of delayed getting to the Senate and committee right now. And they haven't, they work on it the last three or four weeks. And so it's, it's, there's also talk of instead of doing the House bill one eighty-seven, there's a talk of doing a bill that would increase the homestead exemption for seniors. And in that case, would be, you know, senior would pay the tax, the state would be in person for that. So, you know, school district home, if that ran out, it's a, it's a, it's a talk, so I'm not sure there's any tax authorization out there. So there's a thing unknown here, and this is, this will have a substantial impact in the forecast. Depending on what happens legislatively and what the final valuation increases. I wanted to show that and highlight that because it's, you know, I think at this point, everyone's guess is as good as mine because, you know, you kind of have indication, you kind of know what this may look like. But at the same time, there's a lot of design, obviously, legislation to minimize that impact that they have. So we'll have more discussions on this in the future in the finance committee and, you know, see if, you know, can we tweak these adjustments, can we tweak these assumptions? And then obviously we'll update the May, you know, kind of see.
What does he think we're going to know those numbers?
Well, I have to have more discussion with the auditor to kind of know. I, I know in Juanga County they're going through it now, and things are already kind of finalized. From Juanga County, a few one percentage increases, I think it's about thirty percent, a third year ahead of us. Um, I know I think it's like finalized in October of the following year, but we'll know before that, you know, before the additional following state comes lately. But I have that kind of work indication that now I'll have more discussion before the next updates. Any other questions on that at this point? I know it's, it's, this is a very confusing topic to discuss, but at the same time, it can have a substantial impact. This looking, I, I didn't really show a, an updated forecast, but it looks like hypothetically, if it's thirty-five percent increase, we eliminate the budget spending the next two years. And then looking at, talking about the ninety day cash balance, we're probably in the twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one at this point, you know, instead of twenty twenty-six, twenty seventeen. Um, last month, we talked about this Ed Choice voucher program and actually.
Go back and just ask one question. Typically, when you talk with the auditor, you can look at, at the number and you have a hundred percent of increased revenue, but you don't, you don't count on a hundred percent. You usually count on somewhere around ninety-two to ninety-four percent. Did you consider that?
I believe that's all built in the model, there's a collection percentage in there. So there's, that's already kind of big into that. I don't know exactly what percent you have in there, but it's definitely not.
Thank you.
Last one, I talked about Ed Choice vouchers and what those scholarship amounts look like. And actually, I was following, so there's actually data on many of these websites, kind of showing how many students in our district take Ed Choice vouchers. And I just got a screenshot, great level break, that's pretty even across the board, looks like kind of, you know, and then just we have ten twenty-six students. I just kind of wanted to show that just as a follow-up for the last one discussion. And then lastly, uh, the basketball project, they're still hoping to have some work done at Bell Ridge Winter Break, with, with, and few, and Bridges smiling because he's probably the same boat I am at, you know. We don't think it's really going to happen at Winter Break, but they keep pushing that they're going to try to do something, so we'll listen. And then lastly, we can, our, that's the thing to comment on. Which concludes my report. I'll give a nice mention that the, December fourth, we are in a work session in bylaws meeting, we have the facility assessments and what's in the report.
All right, that brings us to public participation. It is a little bit different tonight, we do have three pieces of public participation, so bear with us for a moment. Um, the first one is a hearing for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calders. Um, this is just an opportunity, if anybody has any comments to make on kind of that plan, your, um, Dr. Rotino talked about, it's an opportunity to, um, have public comment about it. Any comments? No? All right. Um, that brings us to our second piece, which is a hearing, allocation of funds for federal programs. The Riverside Local School District Student Services Office invites the public to provide input into the district's use of federal funds towards the education of students with disabilities. These funds are known as Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um, you'll hear IDA funds. Um, the public can provide input via the public portion of the Board of Education meeting or contact the Student Services Office at four four zero three five two zero six six eight. Any comment at this time? All right, so that brings us to our normal, um, section of the public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anybody, yes?
Hi, Marcy Feather. Um, I am representing the PTA. So I think you guys know, we've been trying to make all meetings and the PTA was developed two years ago, really kind of before that, as a parent group, just to try to help the culture here at the school and to be a resource to the teachers and just give more hand on deck. So, um, just kind of wanted to share with you what we're working on and also really ask for your support. Um, a couple people are members of the PTA, most of the board is not. We have very few staff members and teachers that are members of the PTA. Um, and I don't know if there's a concern, if there's a reason why, then please approach us and maybe we can, you know, try to work together. But as you were mentioning, mentioning earlier about a parent-student liaison type position, this is it. I mean, we're transferring right now from a PTA to a PTSA. We, um, have partnerships already with National Honor Society, Student Council inside. Literally, we come to the school, we meet with those students so that we can know what they want and what, we're here to help all students. So we want to hear what they want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and focusing on the right thing. So the partnership's already there. We don't have a student on our board, that's a goal, but we want to be focused and have, you know, the right amount of participation and all that before we would have, um, a student become a part of the PTA as a, like a board member. Um, and then, you know, lots of students don't play sports. And so with the PTA, we're really looking at all students and the whole student. And, um, the privacy in the bathroom thing has not changed since this parent group wasn't a parent group and we met a year, two and a half years ago, maybe even longer than that. Um, the fact that anyone can just look over into the bathroom and people are afraid to go to the bathroom right there. I don't know if mental health funds can go towards some of that, but that is just simply unacceptable. So we will do whatever we can to help campaign for funds for that, for the students. Also, last year, we, um, met with a company called Ant Flow to try to, um, propose feminine hygiene products in all the bathrooms, not just the nurse, in the actual bathrooms for the students to use. And I did send that information that we got to Mr. Hall and Dr. Rataio, um, because I know Ohio is paying for that now as of October third. So if we need any help there with that partnership, I've already met with all those people last year, have the numbers and everything on the products, happy to share that. And then I will send you all our agenda from last week's meeting so you can see what we're doing in the minutes in the membership week. And so hopefully we can kind of partner up a little bit better because we're doing some really great things.
Thank you. Any other public participation, yes?
Yeah, Brian Massey, eighty-one ninety-six Rainbow Drive. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Platko's, uh, presentation on the budget. Not that I disagree, but I just provide some additional input. I did have a conversation with Chris Galloway, the auditor of Lake County, uh, concerning the sex annual revaluation. And he mentioned that he believes it's going to be about thirty-five percent, but asked me to use in my calculations thirty percent. So I think the twenty percent, unless the, as Mr. Plackwood said, unless the state comes up with a three-year averaging, it's probably going to be higher than the twenty percent.
Thank you. Any other public, yes?
Denise Brewster, newly elected board member. I wanted to say that I'm very pleased to be elected and to serve this community. Um, I participated this evening in the senior dinner and then the play, that's why I was late too. Um, but, uh, there's so much work to be done and I'm looking forward to working on the policy.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Yes?
My first in, uh, two or two more AM, New Grand River. We, uh, um, would like to talk about, I guess, maybe some of the direction that the school board going into the next year, you know, perhaps this new role that you might create, taking a more hands-on role in liaising with the student services or whatever members of the staff who reside in charge of handling this harassment and bullying. You know, uh, you know, I'm going through the records of like our bullying report policy and, you know, they're just not correct. It's, it's insane to me, you know, last year, we have a report of one bullying incident in the other entry schools. I myself and my wife and my daughter were partying to, at least to, five others that we heard about, just involving one student. One where my daughter was assaulted in the school and there was no response from the school board towards the student that assaulted her. We had to approach superintendent and call a meeting and let them know what the information was. And another one of the same students had to bring a knife into the Melon High School and stab a kid. Now, I don't have a student in high school, lucky for me, I'm a shared official associate. And Massey here posted an article on his website about the student taking pictures of another kid in the bathroom and posting it online two days ago. Who, what are we doing? Like what's going on? Why are the numbers not right? Why is there not a more interactive liaison role with the board to handle that? That's what you're here for, protect our kids. I don't understand, you know, we got rid of the social emotional programming because people didn't like that. But now, wh- what else are we going to do to keep our kids safe? They can't go to the bathroom, they often have pictures of their private parts posted on the internet. I can't have my kid go to school and get music class, but she's going to get smacked around with a recorder. Like what? I don't know how I'm supposed to say, I mean, my daughter, that's sixth grade next year, LaMooth, knowing that she's going to be safe. It's, it's very frustrating, so, you know, I intend to be a little more active now in the school board and I haven't been up till this point. I don't want to be a more proactive member and seeing what's going on and I, I hope that we can, uh, see some change going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation, yes?
Amy Azaren, um, I am a PTA member, oh, I'm with Marcy, but my comments are just me. So, um, the bathrooms are a huge, a huge problem here at this campus. I came to the craft fair, there were students in the bathroom that could actually watch me in the stall. Um, that's wrong. Um, I listened to a breakdown of the use of the student wellness funds and success funds, and that's two hundred thousand dollars. There are students here that are holding their bathroom all day because they don't feel comfortable going in the bathroom, which could lead to a medical problem, which is a mental health problem. I didn't feel comfortable in those bathrooms and I'm fifty years old. So use some of that money, use the permanent improvement funds and do some work on the bathrooms. Kids need to go to the bathrooms. What I propose is having single stall bathrooms. One student goes in there at a time and it's not an event. It's one student uses the bathroom at a time, kind of like you have at Starbucks. It could be used by a male, a female, the door's locked, they do their bathroom and they go. It, other schools have them. These bathrooms need help and our students don't feel comfortable using the bathrooms here. I have an eleventh grader that won't put in the bathroom here. And I have a fifth grader at Parkside that's coming. These need to be fixed. The community said no levy, these bathrooms need to be fixed. It, they're broken, so you need to fix the broken. I heard the sports fields, the track in the buildings and grounds, I heard no improvements for the bathrooms. Improve the bathrooms. The other thing I'm going to speak about is Jennifer Harden. I came to last month's board meeting and I watched the four of you interact, ask questions, have discussion, and have a meeting, have a meeting. But what I saw from Jennifer Harden was texting on her phone, hiding her phone beyond a big cup, and not participating at all. There's one of the four board members that has students that are sitting right here, right now in the schools. She is the second board member that has students in the schools. And I found her non-participation, she was basically tuned off for the whole meeting. And I found that disheartening that she is one of our elected officials and she was tuned off. She spent the whole board meeting texting on her phone, turned away and not participating.
Thank you. Any additional public participation? Yes?
Hi, Chris Weiss. Last Tuesday, I spent nearly thirteen hours at LaMooth Middle School. I met Coach Antonio Patriarca, a twenty-one-year-old Riverside grad who, despite having Down's syndrome, put in a full day campaigning for his uncle without a break, a truly inspirational young man. After the polls closed, I went to dinner, went home, poured a glass of scotch, looked up the election results, and I found out I got two thousand four hundred and thirteen votes. And I want to thank each and every one of the two thousand four hundred and twelve people who voted for me. I'd like to have won, and if I had, I would have done the best I could as a school board member. November seventh was still a huge victory for me because Lori Korniski retained her seat and the Joshua PAC was defeated. I went to bed with a big old country boy smile on my face and slept like a baby, knowing that one man and his wife are not going to take control of this school district and impose their will upon it. I was smiling with the reassurance that the electorate is hard to fool and that voters can, can and often do make great choices. Last winter, I became aware of the true purpose of the Joshua PAC. I found out the PAC was unlawfully taking money and using it to create fraudulent advertisements and mailing them to rig an election in the Esthia Billa County. I was told the PAC intended to handpick school board candidates and massively spend on their campaigns to take control of and impose their will over school districts. This was attempted at Riverside, Menter and Willoughby Eastlake districts. Mr. Fischel bragged at length that he would, what he would do to reshape these districts according to his will. I decided to test the waters and obtained a petition to run for Riverside School Board. When I told the officials I had done so, they went ballistic. Scott Fischel went so far as to steal one of the petitions being circulated. They said I couldn't win and alluded to an extensive felony record. In fact, I am not a felon, two misdemeanors. They even intimidated another candidate to withdraw her candidacy. I always believed I had a reasonable chance of winning on an even campaign field, but I also realized the public needed to know what insidious plan the Joshua PAC was going to perpetrate. I decided not to have any of my court records sealed or expunged despite assurances from judges that I could have done so, and I filed my candidacy in July. True to form, the Joshua PAC, officials and Brian Massey and his lobbyist for citizens website went to work on me. Credible sources revealed the Joshua PAC outspent me by a factor of sixty to one with a multimedia blitz and numerous hit pieces. I spent less than eight hundred dollars on some signs and printed handouts. Throughout all the vitriol and misinformation that rhetoric, the Joshua PAC and its conspirators have violated just about every campaign law in the books, both locally and federally. And they're about to face the consequences of their actions. The most important thing is that now you, the voters and parents in this school district, know the truth about what Scott Fischel represents. Something leads me to believe he's not going to get two thousand four hundred and thirteen votes next election. To Lori Korniski, I extend a heartfelt congratulations and Godspeed on your win. Denise Brewster, I'd like to believe you weren't in on the plan, nevertheless, congratulations, the officials bought you an election. To Scott, Kathy and Brian, I dare not say what I'm thinking, except you guys messed with the wrong ranger. Rangers lead the way.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, so that brings us to our consent agenda. The first thing on the consent agenda is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the ITO system of the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through H, uh, second. Consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through H, a second.
Second.
I'd like to at least acknowledge our donations. So we have a sizable donation of twenty-five hundred dollars from Keith and Tracy Armstrong to the Riverside Golf Team. So we thank them for that donation. And did the air gas equipment go on our last agenda or is that?
I'm just thinking the same thing when we were going through it and I checked if it was on the aspirin.
I don't remember. But if not, we still thank them for their donation and we'll have that on our agenda next time if it was not on our agenda this last meeting. Is there any other conversation or discussion on the items on the finance? All right, then, Mr. Placko, can we call the roll?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fisher.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye. Motion carried. That brings us to curriculum and programming. That brings us to personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through D.
Second.
Is there any discussion on these items? Well, then can we call the roll?
Scott Fisher.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye. Motion carried. Now we'll do curriculum and programming.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A and B.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck, is there any discussion? Hearing none, could you take the roll?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that brings us to buildings, grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items on the building grounds, consent agenda, items A and B as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, can we call the roll please? Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fisher.
Aye.
Tom Heck. Aye. As mentioned earlier.
Motion carried, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. As mentioned earlier, the policies will be moved on next month, but they're updated policies. If you have the agenda, you can see the titles of them and you can review them at your leisure.
Which is called the first reading, right?
It's the first reading.
First reading and then second reading and then vote for everyone that's familiar, right?
We will vote on them next in December.
Right.
First reading and second reading.
First reading.
And then vote.
I was just looking for the bylaw.
It's in there.
It's in there.
There's three of them at the top.
Yeah, sure. Is there a result? Zero one, oh one, zero one six four, zero one four eight.
In your packet is the last one, but I bunched them, we bunched them together.
That's what we'll talk about the last meeting.
One four eight, yes.
Well, one, one four eight.
All right, that brings us to Board of Education update. Any updates? We'll see you later.
Congratulations to Ms. Korniski and Ms. Brewster, welcome to the board in January. Welcome again back to the board. And very excited to continue having Riverside roll forward, so.
Congratulations to yourselves.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Heck, welcome to the state.
Looking forward to that. And when I was down at OSBA, I had a chance to talk to the superintendent and the treasurers and the board members, so very excited to fill in the role.
Any other board updates? All right, that brings us to our next meeting announcement. We have a work session December fourth, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty PM. Again, that is to go over the bylaw, scare reports and to start talking about moving the facility planning forward.
Yes, those are the recommendations. So bylaw's going to be here too. Direct any questions, Mike.
Great. We have a finance, audit and personnel committee meeting on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty AM. Buildings and grounds committee meeting, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty AM. Curriculum and programs committee meeting, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty AM. Business meeting, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM. And brings us to adjournment, I will make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-six PM. And Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fisher.
Aye.
Tom Heck. Aye.
Aye, motion carried.